Chambers for our celebration this afternoon. I think first, we should all stand and do the flag salute, and then we'll follow it by the Star Spangled Banner.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I am a nation under God in the liberty of this world.
Please remain standing. Tina Johnson will now do the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say, can you see by the star's early light? What so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts be watched, were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gay proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Let's hear it for Tina one more time. Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the Sunshine Act.
Yes, Mayor. The time is now 12:05. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Law, Chapter 231, notice of this meeting was published in the December 24, 2015, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, and the Herald News. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall bulletin board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Here.
Mayor Petracco.
Here.
Commissioner Walter Smith. Commissioner Peter C. Scarpelli. And the Honorable Judge Joanne Caciulli.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to bring Father Tom DeCastro and all the reverends up for the invocation, please.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed your glory to all nations. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through you authority is rightly administered and laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. Assist with your spirit of counsel and fortitude these men who today take the oath of office as commissioners here in the town of Nutley, and one who will govern as mayor of this township. Watch over them and their families. Protect and bless each of them with wisdom, honesty, integrity, right judgment, good health, and fairness to all. May they always execute laws with justice and mercy, and seek to restrain crime, vice, and immorality. As elected officials, may they guard our political welfare. May they be enabled by your guidance and powerful protection to discharge their duties with honesty and ability. We pray for our township after this period of campaigning, with the hope that all those elected will lead at every level and work for the common good of all people who dwell here. Heavenly Father, God of all wisdom, as we gather on this day of inauguration and new beginnings, imbue these elected officials with an abundance of wisdom, patience, right judgment, and the necessary strength of character to do the right thing and always make wise, unselfish, and sound choices. May they avoid making erroneous decisions that will adversely affect the welfare of all. As they begin to meet and organize and plan for the years ahead, which will be filled with many projects that can bring prosperity and financial security to this township, aid them to be patient with one another and refrain from discord and malice, always seeking harmony and effective compromise. This afternoon, we pray for wisdom, not rhetoric; generosity, not indifference; and justice, not patronage. May they not erect barriers by harsh words, but build bridges that bring many together through kindness and charity. We pray for leaders gifted in diplomacy, blessed with character and integrity, and leaders who know that our security comes from relationships of trust and communication, not divisiveness. Father, as we prayerfully reflect, may recall the words of First Timothy in the Holy Book, which speaks about praying for those in authority. First of all, then I ask that supplications, prayers, petitions, and thanksgiving be offered for everyone, for kings and for all in authority, that we may lead a quiet and tranquil life in all devotion and dignity. And for our part, give each of us patience, so that we may in turn give to our officials a chance to govern with grace and compassion, justice, love and support, and sincere effort to celebrate sage decision-making. Likewise, Father, we commend to your unbounded mercy all the constituents of the township of Nutley. May we preserve in union that peace which the world cannot give, and after enjoying the blessings of this life, be admitted to those which are eternal. We make this prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
At this time, I'd like to call Reverend Pam Bacala. Is she here? Okay. Reverend Mauro Primavera, not speaking today? Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I would like to introduce our dignitaries here. A long list, bear with me. Here we have today Senator Ronald L. Rice, Assemblyman Ralph Caputo, Assemblywoman Cleopatra G. Tucker, our good friend, former Senator Paul DiGaitano in the back. We also have Chief Tommy Strumalo here. We have Chief Paul Cuffone here from the Board of Ed. We have Charlie Kozinski, our Township Attorney, Alena Jena Temple. We have our prosecutor, Angelo Savideo. I already introduced Father Mauro. Father Rich Blackberry from St. Mary's. Reverend LaDuke is here. The Honorable Joanne Caciulli. From the Library Board, our longest-standing Board Member in Nutley, we have the famous Tony Iannarone. Also from the Planning Board, Attorney Barry Kuzira. From the Zoning Board, Diane McGovern. If there are anybody else that we missed, please raise your hand at this time.
Mayor, excuse me if I may.
Yes.
Just before coming up, I did speak to former Commissioner Arrecio. Can't be here, but he extends his best wishes to all of us, so I think we should, just in the roll call, just acknowledge his presence.
Sure. And thank you, Commissioner Carmen Arrecio, who is a long-serving Board Member here, and we will thank him for his warm wishes. Okay, at this time, Madam Clerk, I think we are going to start our swearing-ins.
Commissioner Rogers.
(inaudible). Natasha notices we do it a little different than the KGB over there in the Soviet Union.
I, Stephen L. Rogers.
I, Stephen L. Rogers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
All the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the County of Essex.
In the County of Essex.
State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Stephen L. Rogers.
I, Stephen L. Rogers.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
The governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
At this time, we'd like to call up Commissioner Tucci, please.
There's a lot of them, this could take a while.
Take your time.
We'll use this one.
(inaudible). I, Mauro G. Tucci.
I, Mauro G. Tucci.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the County of Essex.
In the County of Essex.
State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Mauro G. Tucci.
I, Mauro G. Tucci.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the County of Essex.
In the County of Essex.
State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Mauro G. Tucci.
I, Mauro G. Tucci.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
Same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
Governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
(applause).
At this time, we'd like to call up Commissioner Evans, please.
I, Thomas J. Evans.
I, Thomas J. Evans.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the County of Essex.
In the County of Essex.
State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Thomas J. Evans.
I, Thomas J. Evans.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
At this time, we'd like to call up Commissioner Evans, please.
I, Thomas J. Evans.
I, Thomas J. Evans.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the County of Essex.
In the County of Essex.
State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Thomas J. Evans.
I, Thomas J. Evans.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
(applause).
I, Alphonse Petracco.
I, Alphonse Petracco.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
All the duties of Office of Commissioner.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the County of Essex.
In the County of Essex.
State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
To the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Alphonse Petracco.
I, Alphonse Petracco.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, and at this time, we'd like to call up Commissioner Scarpelli.
Yeah.
Are you holding the Bible? Are you holding the Bible?
I, Joseph P. Scarpelli.
I, Joseph P. Scarpelli.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the County of Essex.
In the County of Essex.
State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Joseph P. Scarpelli.
I, Joseph P. Scarpelli.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of New Jersey.
And the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
(applause).
The first resolution is to the swearing, well, not the swearing-in, resolution for the appointment of the Township Mayor, and I will read that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Joseph P. Scarpelli be appointed as mayor of the Township of Nutley. I move that resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Same.
Great.
Okay, at this time, I would like to call Joe Scarpelli up here and his dad.
Please sit down.
Call Judge Caciulli up for the swearing-in.
Yes, will Judge Caciulli please come up and swear in our new mayor?
Bring everybody up. On, everybody.
Cover.
I, Joseph P. Scarpelli.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Mayor.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Mayor.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the County of Essex, New Jersey.
In the County of Essex, New Jersey.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Joseph P. Scarpelli.
I, Joseph P. Scarpelli.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
(applause).
Okay. And the first is, you look around the room, each mayor's picture is up on the wall, from number one all the way through, and would like to acknowledge Commissioner Tucci, when he was mayor in 2008, his picture is also on the wall.[1683.75][1683.75](applause). At this point, I would like Mayor Petracco to go over to the side of the wall with your family and unveil the photo.
Thank you. Actually, just in the middle of trying to organize.
Number 125.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Stephen L. Rogers be appointed as Director of Public Affairs. So. So move.
Commissioner Rogers?
Stane.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco? Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogers?
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Moro G. Tucci be appointed as Director of Parks and Public Property, so moved.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Stane.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco? Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Thomas J. Evans be appointed as Director of Revenue and Finance. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Stane.
Commissioner Petracco? Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Commissioner Tucci?
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Alphonse Petracco be appointed as Director of Public Safety. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco? Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Commissioner Petracco?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco? Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Evans?
That it is hereby determined by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that all executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative power, authority, and duties related to the positions and committees and other items listed in the Public Affairs Department in the budget of 2016, except as modified by this resolution, shall be exercised and performed by the Public Affairs Department, and that all executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authorities, and duties relating to said positions and committees as listed hereafter be and the same are hereby assigned to the Public Affairs Department, namely Assistant to the Director, Health Officer, Registrar, Sanitary Inspectors, Graduate Nurses in Public Health, Town Physician, Health Physician, Town Pediatrician, Clerk Typus, Secretary to the Director, Civic Pride Committee, Health Clinics, Community Health, Mental Health Services of Belleville, Bloomfield, and Nutley, Care Committee, Women's Initiatives of Nutley and Nutley's Veterans Council, Deputy Registrar, Senior Clerk, Clerk Typus, Director of Consumer Affairs, Garbage and Trash Removal, Dog Regulation, Mental Health Program, Services of the Nutley Family Service Bureau, Aid to the New Jersey Association of Retarded Children, Air Pollution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Commissioner Rogers?
What's the number of the resolution? I don't think.
It would be 131.
Okay, thanks. That it hereby be determined by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that all executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to the following positions and committees and to other items as listed in the Department of Parks and Public Property in the budget of 2012, except.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, that should be 2016.
I'm sorry. Budget of 2015 or 16, it's not.
16.
15. Except as modified by this resolution, shall be exercised and performed by the Department of Parks and Public Property, and that all the executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to the said functions and committees as listed hereafter be and the same are hereby assigned to Department of Parks and Public Property, namely Superintendent of Parks and Recreation, Secretary Administrator to the Director, Switchboard Operator, Single Kirk, Senior Clerk Typus, General Park Supervisor, Park Supervisor, Garage Attendant, Clerk Typus, Principal Clerk Typus, Benefits Coordinator, Automotive Mechanic, Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, Building Maintenance Workers, Senior Building Maintenance Workers, Mason, Shetree Supervisor, Tree Climbers, Tree Trimmers, Senior Clerk Typus, Shetree Division, Recreation Director, Senior Citizen Director, Senior Citizen Transportation Program, Recreation Evening Director, Bus Drivers, Recreation Leaders, Information Technology, Recreation Center Directors, Assistant Recreation Director, Account Clerk, Events Coordinator, Adult Daycare Supervisor, Adult Daycare Leaders, Adult Carays, All Insurance Liability Matters, including but not limited to the Joint Insurance Fund, the Municipal Access Liability Fund, Group Insurance for Employees, Health Insurance, Dental Insurance, Carpenter Sports Officials, Recreation Supervisors, Special Recreation Education Instructor, Gymnasium Supervisors, Nutley Memorial Parkway Committee, Shetree Committee, Labor, Seasonal Human Resources, Special Transportation Programs, Jitney Transportation Programs. Be it further resolved that all resolutions or parts of resolutions inconsistent with the provisions of this resolution be and the same are hereby repealed, so moved. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. That it is hereby determined by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and all executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to the following positions and committees and to other items as listed in the Department of Revenue and Finance in the budget of 2016, except as modified by this resolution, shall be exercised and performed by the Department of Revenue and Finance, and that all executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to said functions and committees as listed hereafter be and the same are hereby assigned to the Department of Revenue and Finance, namely Municipal Clerk, Deputy Municipal Kirk, Keyboard Clerk, Clerk Typus, Tax Collector, Assistant Municipal Tax Collector, Cashiers, Treasurer, CFO, Executive Assistant Clerk I, Clerk II, Account Clerk, Senior Purchasing Agent, Tax Assessor, Senior Clerk Typus, Assistant Tax Assessor, Construction Code Official, Zoning, Building Subcode Official, Plumbing Subcode Official, Electrical Subcode Official, Building Inspectors, Keyboard Clerk, Clerk I, Clerk I, Water Billing Supervisor, Water Billing Account Clerk. Be it further resolved that all resolutions or parts of resolutions inconsistent with the provisions of this resolution be and are the same are hereby repealed, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Commissioner Tucci?
That it is hereby determined by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that all executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authorities, and duties relating to the following positions and committees and to other items as listed in the Public Safety Department in the budget of 2016, except as modified by this resolution, shall be exercised and performed by the Public Safety Department, and that all the executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to the said functions and committees as listed hereafter be and same are hereby assigned to the Public Safety Department, namely Assistant to the Director, Municipal Court Administrator, Deputy Court Administrator, Violations Clerk, Assistance Violations Clerks, Police Records Clerks, Recorder, Operator, Clerk Typus, Full and Part-Time Superintendent of Weights and Measures, Volunteer Emergency and Rescue Squad, Municipal Magistrate, Chief of Police and Deputy Chief of Police, Captain, Lieutenant, and Detective Lieutenant, Sergeants and Detective Sergeants, Police Officers and Detectives, Special Officers and Detectives, Special Officers in School, Traffic Guards, Special Officers for Elections, Secretarial Assistant Typing, Secretary to Police Chief, Municipal Alliance, Management Assistant, Fire Department Chief, Assistant Chiefs in the Fire Department, Fire Department Secretary, Police and Fire Signal System Superintendent, Fire Department Volunteers, Fire Subcode Official, Mechanic, Mechanic Helper, Police Matri, Clerk Stenographer, Senior Clerk Stenographer, Senior Clerk Typus, Clerk, Clerk Part-Time Emergency Management, CERT, Police Youth Organization, Junior Police, Highway Traffic Coordinator Committee, Communications Operators, Traffic Safety Coordinator, Community Mental Health Mentoring Program, Deputy Chief Fire Department, Fire Captains, Lieutenants, and Firefighters. Be it further resolved that all resolutions or parts of resolutions inconsistent with the provisions of this resolution be and same are hereby repealed. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Commissioner Rogers?
That it is hereby determined by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that all executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authorities, and duties relating to the following positions and committees and to other items as listed in the Public Works Department in the budget of 2016, except as modified by this resolution, shall be exercised and performed by the Public Works Department, and that all the executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to the said functions and committees as listed hereafter be and the same are hereby assigned to Public Works Department, namely Municipal Engineer, Engineering Coordinator, Inspector, Clerk Typus, Account Clerks, Administrative Clerk, Assistant Street and Sewer Superintendent, Superintendent Mechanical Equipment and Repair, Mechanic and Welder, Equipment Operators, Assistant Road Supervisor, Sewer Foreman, Assistant Water Superintendent, Water Meter Readers, Municipal Parking Lots, Parking Lot Attendant, Street Lighting Recycling Program, Senior Traffic Maintenance Worker, Clerk Stenographers, Street and Sewer Foreman, Road Supervisor, Road Repairman, Sewer Maintenance Workers, Water Department Foreman, Water Repair, Groundskeeper, Nutley Environmental Conservation Committee, Passaic Valley Sewer Commission, Traffic Maintenance Worker, On-Street Maintenance Worker, Traffic Maintenance Worker, Laborer, Go Green Initiative Secretary to Department Head, Public Works Department Mechanics, Senior Engineer Aides, Computer Operators. Be it further resolved that all resolutions or parts of resolutions inconsistent with the provisions of this resolution be and the same are hereby repealed, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Petracco? Whereas the so-called Commissioner Government Act, as is sometimes known as the Wallshack Entitled, an act relating to regulating and providing for the government of cities, boroughs, and other municipalities within the state approved April 25, 1911, was duly adopted by the voters of the Township of Nutley in May, 1912. Whereas the mandatory provisions of said act and acts supplementary thereof and mandatory thereof, it becomes the duty of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley to determine the executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative authority and duties among the departments as the Board of Commissioners' judgment seems appropriate. Whereas in the judgment of the Board of Commissioners, powers and duties to be performed by each department and the assignments thereof to the department's public service. And whereas the executive, administrative, and legislative control of certain officers and their powers and duties are vested in the Board of Commissioners, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that all executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to the following positions and committees shall be exercised and performed by the mayor, and that all the executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to said position and committees are, as listed here, after be the same and hereby assigned to. Public Defender, Senior Citizen Housing, Community Development Block Grant, Library Board Trustees, zoning board of adjustment and board of adjustment attorney, planning board and planning board attorney, rent leveling board and rent leveling board attorney, Holiday Tree Lighting Committee, Brotherhood Committee, SS County's Mayor Conference, Citizen Advisor Group. Be further resolved that the resolution or parts of the resolution are inconsistent with the provisions of this resolution be and same are hereby repealed, resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that all resolutions heretofore voted upon and passed by the individual commissioners are hereby ratified and passed subsequently to the members being duly sworn into office. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas NJSA 48:5-14 mandates that the governing body of municipal corporations shall, by resolution passed by a majority vote of the full membership thereof, designate as a depository for all of its money a bank or trust company having a place of business in the state and organized under the laws of the U.S. or this state. Now therefore be resolved on 17th day of May, 2016, by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that the following banks are hereby designated as depositories for the Township of Nutley. CAP 1 Investors Bank, TD Bank, Valley National Bank, New Jersey Cash Management Fund. Be it further resolved that prior to the deposit of any municipal funds in the above mentioned depositories, said bank shall file with the Chief Financial Officer a statement indicating that the bank is covered under the Government Unit's Deposit Protection Act, RS 17:9-41, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that the following township officials are hereby authorized to sign checks or withdrawal slips where a combination of three principal signatures are required. Mayor or Director of Revenue and Finance and Township Clerk or Clerk I and the Treasurer or Chief Financial Officer. Be further resolved that signature cards with the signatures of the persons authorized to sign be forwarded to all township depositories, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Council with. Is consolidate resolution 139, 140, 141, I believe. The Valley National TD Bank, there's only two. 139 and 140. Whereas for the convenience of the Township of Nutley, it is deemed advisable that checks drawn on Valley National Bank and TD Bank be signed by affixing a facsimile signature. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, that Valley National Bank and TD Bank are hereby authorized to honor for the account of and to the debit of the Township of Nutley each check or draft for the payment of money bearing a facsimile signature. Be it further resolved that the bank may rely on this resolution until the receipt by the bank of a certified copy of a resolution by the Board of Commissioners revoking same the township expressly assuming all risks involved in any unauthorized uses of such facsimile signature. Be it further resolved that the Township Clerk be and is hereby authorized and directed to furnish Valley National Bank and TD Bank a certified copy of this resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas it is desirable that idle funds of the Township of Nutley be invested in legal investment vehicles at all times, whereas it is occasionally necessary for the transfer of funds for purposes of meeting the current township expenses or for the purposes affecting investments. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that it does hereby authorize the Chief Financial Officer to request bids and to place orders for the investment of idle funds solely in legal authorized investment vehicles such as investments to the investing institution. And be it further resolved that the above named financial, Chief Financial Officer is hereby authorized to transfer funds by war solely for following purposes and subject to all pertinent regulations. One, to or from township checking account to other township accounts, two or from township checking or savings accounts, two or from accounts specified by the banks of the State of New Jersey Cash Management Fund solely for the purpose of investing for the account of the Township of Nutley. Three, from township checking accounts solely for the purpose of making payment of current township expenses which have been approved for payment, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Alan J. Genitempo be appointed Municipal Township Attorney for the Township of Nutley for the remainder of this year, December 31, 2016. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Before I cast my vote, this is an extraordinary man. This is an extraordinary man. Thank you. Thank you for your service, and with great honor, I vote yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor, were we going to change that date to May 17 of 2020?
Fine, Clerk, I just read what was on the resolution.
Okay, so the date is for May 17 of 2020. Okay, so the date is for May 17th of 2020. Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
I echo Commissioner Rogers' thoughts. He puts in a tremendous amount of time, especially everything that we've had going on over the past couple of years. So I proudly vote yes.
I, Allen J. Genatempo.
I, Allen J. Genatempo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform the duties.
And justly perform all the duties.
Of the office of municipal attorney.
Of the office of municipal attorney.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the County of Essex.
In the County of Essex.
State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Allen J. Genatempo.
I, Allen J. Genatempo.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Angelo Servideo be appointed Municipal Township Prosecutor for the Township of Nutley for the remainder of, until May 17th, 2020. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Angelo, I haven't had much opportunity to interact with you, but likewise, extraordinary work. Thank you for your service, and I vote yes.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
I, Angelo Servideo.
I, Angelo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of municipal prosecutor.
Perform all the duties of the office of municipal prosecutor.
In the Township of Nutley.
In the Township of Nutley.
County of Essex, New Jersey.
County of Essex.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Angelo Servideo.
I, Angelo Servideo.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yay!
Have a board address the commissioners. I'm going to start it off. Fellow commissioners, honored guests, Reverend clergy, a new tradition has started today. Those who have sat in these chairs and served our township as commissioners, they sit with us during this reorganization meeting. To steal Commissioner Rogers' line, we are honoring the past. There are not many of us, and I would like to thank Judge Caciolo, and the original Mayor Scarpelli. Thank you for attending today. I hope this continues further. I would like to thank my committee for all their hard work throughout the campaign. I'd like to thank my family, Al, who does all the publicity and all the mailings. They did a great job. Ari, my daughter Ari, and her fiance Nick, who stood out there in the polls and tried to get us votes. My daughter Gianna, who could not be here today. She's out at school, University of Scranton, and one more year, there'll be another Dr. Scarpelli. And of course, my wife Sue, who I could not do this without her. She holds down the fort at home, and I love you. Of course, my mom and dad, who, you know, they started this all. And I'd like to thank some of my other family who's here today, my Uncle Vito and Aunt Joanne, my other Aunt Joanne, my nephew Anthony, my in-laws, Ann and Al. Bob and Vicki could not be here today, but my brother-in-law Mike, brother-in-law Daria, Hitty, who holds down my chiropractic office, and my friend since 10 years old, Frank Oliver. I'd like to thank all my friends for their love and support throughout this reelection bid. Thank you to the men and women of the DPW, who make me look good every day. Congratulations to my fellow commissioners on their reelection. Thank you also to Sam Flitell, John Kelly, and Frank Catella for their time and efforts. And congratulations to Allen Genatempo and Angelo Servideo on their reappointments. Special thanks to my guardian angels, who have guided me throughout this last year, my grandmother and grandfather, my brother Mike, my nephew Michael, my uncle Ralph, and of course Kevin, whose sage advice came in a different form this election. I miss you all, and I know you're all here today. Could Antonio Pignotaro, who came to America and bought a piece of land on Milton Avenue in the 1890s, ever imagine that not only would his great-grandson become mayor of Nutley, but also his great-great-grandson? Only in America, the first time in our history a father and son served as mayor. Not bad for a family from Nanny Goat Hill. It's obvious from the election results that the people like the direction the town is going, with all five commissioners being reelected. It will be my honor to lead this Board of Commissioners in this town over the next four years. We have a unique town with many traditions that need to be preserved, and I pledge to keep this town as much as I can like the town we grew up in. But there are challenges on the horizon, the biggest being the redevelopment of the Hoff and the Roche campus. In the very near future, we should have the signing of the lease with Roche and the Hackensack-Seton Hall Medical School. This will be a great branding of the site, and I'd like to thank all that have brought us to this point, especially Commissioner Petracco and Commissioner Tucci. End. This is the first step in what will be a protracted process, the selling of the property to a developer, the assignment of the medical school lease to the developer, and finding corporate tenants to fill the existing buildings. Smart redevelopment that replace our lost ratables and take into consideration the inability of our schools to accommodate additional children. Smart redevelopment that complements rather than competes with our downtown, and smart redevelopment that provides a big boost to our local accommodating. I would like to thank Darian Wilson from Roche, Kevin DeSimone from Hackensack Medical Center, and Matt Baroak from Seton Hall University for joining with us today, and look forward to our partnering with them as we move forward. Would you please stand? Other challenges we will face over the next four years, improving our schools and finding viable long-term solution to the overcrowding issue, revitalizing our downtown, and the successful transformation of the East Center Street corridor to a neighborhood that is cohesive and connected to our parks. These are big issues that need big ideas. I believe that this Board of Commissioners, with their knowledge and experience, is prepared to meet those challenges. Thank you for the privilege of serving the people of Nutley as your 18th mayor. I pledge to my fellow commissioners, open communication and respect of our former government, and will do my utmost to uphold the confidence of the voters and this board to lead us into the next phase of our history. God bless this town, and God bless this Board of Commissioners. Thank you. Commissioner Petracco.
Mayor, unfortunately, my son Salvatore had a bathroom emergency, so if I could wait, that would be appreciated.
Great. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. As I reflected on the election and the prior 13 years of service to the community as a sitting commissioner, especially sitting in a seat for 13 years which, as your Revenue and Finance Commissioner, and knowing every year that I have the responsibility to send all of you, not a Christmas card, but your tax bill. So it creates challenges every day, but one that we have to rise above. I want to thank my campaign team. Team Evans worked tirelessly for the opportunity for me to actually come back and serve, serve all of you. I want to thank my family, my brothers, my sister Ted, Ken, my sister Kathy, and their spouses. I want to thank my children, Mary Kate, Tommy, Andrew, my son-in-law Jared, and my daughter-in-law Christina, and my grandson Jack, who I had hoped would be here and awake for my speech, but apparently has decided to take a timeout. Thank you for all of your love and support to allow me to follow our family's commitment to service to the community. I want to thank my team here at Town Hall because they work tirelessly as well, not for election, but to serve every resident in town equally, to provide them the best service that they can, and I'm very proud of them. Both my mom and dad have passed. As a child, they instilled in all of us the importance of service to others. I suspect that's why I became a CPA, and ultimately spent my adult career in a partnership environment where ethos, values, and service were the guiding principles of my everyday actions. To all of those Nutley voters who came out to vote, I thank you. To all of the Nutley voters who actually cast a vote for me, I want to thank you for placing your trust in me once again. I will work very hard to earn your trust every day. We have much to do, as the mayor just articulated. The town is at a crossroads. We must be able to, think as a ward, to come up with the solutions that make sense for all of us. I pray for God's blessings to shine upon me, to fortify me with the firmness of virtue, with the humble strength of character, so that I may lead in the best interest of all Nutley residents and for our future beneficiaries, and to do that without personal interest. I have led my professional career in partnership this way. I have instilled this in my children and now my grandson. I want to congratulate my fellow commissioners. I wish them the same blessings, and to my fellow commissioners and to my mayor. Let's get back to work.
Commissioner Tucci.
Yes. Mayor, Commissioners, Reverend clergy, honored guests. First, I'd like to congratulate all of my colleagues on their success at the polls last week. I'd like to wish Mayor Scarpelli well as he begins his tenure. I know he's going to do an excellent job for us, and I support him completely. I'd also like to thank our former mayor, Alphonse Petracco, for his four years of service during really tough times. Al took over as mayor, and we got a letter from Roche saying, "We're leaving." Needless to say, a lot of time, a lot of hard work went into bringing us to where we are today, citing that medical school, developing that property, and Al, I thank you for your service in that regard. I'd like to thank my wife Linda and my children for all the love and support that they give me, my grandchildren, if you got my literature and we sent enough of it out, also my pups who are not here today, all right, for everything that they do for us. My brothers and sisters, you know, most people have one right-hand man. I'm very fortunate. I have two right-hand men, and they're both of my brothers Gerard and Tommy. Thank you. To my sisters, my nieces, my nephews, and everyone else, I need to thank you for all that you do so that I can do what I love, and that's serve this township. To my friend, my mentor, my confidant, and just an all-around great guy, Assemblyman Ralph Caputo. Ralph, thank you for everything you do for me. I also have a surprise guest here today, Ralph's assembly mate, my sister-in-law, Liz Moye. Thank you, Assemblywoman. To my Parks Department family, and we truly are a family, I could never thank you enough for all the fine work that you do, all the support that you give me, and the friendship that we've conjured up over these past 16 years. As I begin my 17th year in office, many monumental decisions are going to need to be made, and I'm ready to do my part and work with this team to assure that this town stays progressive. As I often say, individually, we can do good things. Together, we will do great things. We will not let you down. In closing, I'd like to thank the people that make all this possible, and those who bestow the honor and privilege of serving upon each and every one of us, and that's the people of this great township of Nutley. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rogers.
Well, first, I'd certainly thank my wonderful mother, 90 years old. Still driving around and moving around. The love of my life, Natasha, thank you. My daughter Crystal, and my son Stephen, and my daughter Shannon, who's in Illinois. She couldn't get here. My friend Frank, Courtney, Lindsay, and the entire staff of the Public Affairs Department have done an extraordinary job over the last four years. And most of all, I want to thank God. You know, he's a big part, a big part of our lives. I'm the crybaby, okay? I am. When I think about this town and this country, extraordinary leaders. We have our ups and downs, and it rains on all of us. God has made a significant impact on this town, and that's one thing I never want to see lost in Nutley. I got to tell you, you go out of town, you ever drive into Nutley and just feel different? There's something different here, and I believe that what is different is the hand of Almighty God. We all have a call.
We all have a calling, every single person in this room. Some callings are very, very difficult, and others are not, but we're all called by God to do good. So a few things we're gonna do in the Public Affairs Department. We're gonna be working on programs that will help those children, families, the mothers who suffer drug addiction. I weep, because a few weeks ago, four mothers walked into my office on a Saturday morning whose children died at a young age as a result of drug abuse. But we're gonna work hard to combat that. Assemblymen, we're gonna be looking for your help to help change some laws in the legislature, but we're gonna treat some of this, you know, I promised I wouldn't cry today, I said to myself I wouldn't, but you can't when it hits your heart, folks. I looked at these mothers, and they pleaded for help. They've gotten a lot of help from our town, the Hope Committee with the mayor, the judge, you've been a wonderful judge, a wonderful judge, you've done so much good for people, and every commissioner here. But we gotta treat some of that as a mental health problem and not a criminal problem. Young children addicted to drugs, and even parents and adults, they need some help. They'll get help from the government, but they're gonna get help from someone else, from another group, and this is where the program we have been putting together is gonna be giving birth in the next four years. You all know what we've done with the veterans in town, and that's rock-solid, and that initiative in this town will be here forever. But we, not I, we endeavor to launch one of the most progressive interfaith initiatives in the state of New Jersey to include you gentlemen, you priests, you ministers, because I found something out very early in speaking to these individuals. As the government, we can do a lot, but boy, we can't get into the heart, soul, and spirit of these people who are hurting, you can. You're gonna be involved, and I thank you for the service that you've given this town. We haven't thanked you enough, thank you very much. As we move forward, I know that I've got a great staff of Public Affairs, and I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but every single man up here and woman, when this town was in need, when one individual is in need, they all stepped up, every single one of them. I look forward, Mayor, to working with you and all of you for the next four years, sorry for the tears, but, you know, I'm kind of a softie inside sometimes, but, like I said, these things hit your heart, and I thank God that I'm here to help out. Thank you, and God bless you all. Commissioner Petracca.
You know, next time, Mayor, I think I have to go before Steve, he's a hard act to follow. First, I just want to recognize everyone that came out today, all the people that keep us safe in Nutley, day, night, holidays, rain, snow, and that's our public safety department. I see all the cops and firemen in here. I see Michael Rossi from the ambulance squad, the finest in the country, thank you, Michael, for coming. Let's give the ambulance squad a round of applause. As you all know, I don't usually read my speeches, but I've left so many people out through the years, so please just bear with me. First of all, I would like to thank and congratulate, I would like to congratulate all my colleagues on the board for their reelection. I would also like to thank my family, starting with the two most honorable people I know, my mother and father. Thank you for always being there for me and my family. Thank you for all the family values that you have taught me, especially the number-one rule, "Family always comes first." I would like to thank my beautiful wife for all her patience, understanding, the find in her heart to give me the opportunity to follow my dreams and hold down the fort while I am away from home. You are truly my soulmate, and I would only want you in my life. I would like to thank my two brothers for always going to bat for me, even if I wasn't always 100% right. You have both shown me unconditional love since we were kids growing up on Park Avenue. You both know where I stand with you, always by each other's sides, no matter what. My children, Sonny Vincent and Salvatore, Daddy couldn't be more proud of you, fine young men that you have turned out to be. My son Vincent couldn't be here, could not be here today, he's in Seton University today in class studying to become a doctor, where he has been on the dean's list since he started. My son Sonny, there could never be a kid that has so many of their father's characteristics as my son Sonny. Last 20 years, everyone has told me, "He's just like you." Somebody can make some noise in here, right? Oh, my God. I am so proud of you, Sonny, he's entering his last year in Montclair University, and then he will continue his education in law at Seton Hall University. He's the only one of my kids that wants to ever enter in politics in Nutley. I keep telling him, "The only chair you should aspire to be here is the town attorney chair over there." Moving along to my son Salvatore, who's a, yes, there is a big spread in years of my children, and sometimes people think I am his grandfather, but I am his father. I would like to tell you a little story, Sal, and I had the past Friday night. That story was when I came home Friday night, which, as all the commissioners know, the thing that suffers the most is your family. And I said to my son Salvatore, I said, "Hey, Sal, you know, are you a little disappointed that Daddy didn't become the mayor again?" He goes, "Well, Dad," and mind you, he's eight. He says, "You know, Dad, I was born into this stuff, I didn't have a choice." He says, "When I was born, you were the commissioner." He goes, "And I hardly ever saw you." Then, when I didn't think it could get any worse, he goes, "You became the mayor, and I really didn't see you." He goes, "I have to tell you the truth, I was hoping you were gonna lose the whole thing." I would also like to thank, start over, I would also like to thank all that were on the campaign trail, there is too many to thank by name, but I would like to thank, I would like to thank all of them. I would be remiss not to give a special thank you to Linda Diachesson, Sam Corella, Lisa Holler, Dana Malo, and Kathy Kelly. Thank you all for being there for me, not only for, and not only for the campaign, but always in my life, thank you. I would also like to thank Chief Paul Cuffin and Chief Tom Stromer for running two great agencies, and also for rallying the troops for me. You are two good friends. I'm almost done. I would also like to thank all of our friends up the street at the ambulance squad. Speaking of friends, God bless me with so many good friends, and I would like to acknowledge a few of them today. Louis Fisaro, Bill Algeri, Joe Valano, and Jerry Green. And also Tommy Malo. Let's give him a round of applause. I would also like to give a shout-out to my best friends, besides, of course, Salvatore, but I'd like to give a shout-out to SYA and Annie Rotundo, you truly are doing God's work. I would also like to thank everyone from the deli, Lord knows I've been absentee there for eight years, and Johnny, my nephew Anthony, Austin Silverstein, I couldn't do without you. I would also like to thank Father Tom and his brother Dominic for being there for me. In closing, once again, I would like to thank all of the commissioners for voting for me to be the mayor for the last four years. It has truly been a wonderful journey. More, I would like to thank you for always being by my side through the Roche Committee, you are true professional, and I'm proud to call you my friend. To our newly-elected mayor, Joe, I blame you for getting me into this game of politics. Way back when you were the county freeholder, I came to one of your functions, and I said, "Wow, this is pretty cool, if I only knew." Anyway, Joe, there is, anyway, Joe, there is no better honor than being the Nutley mayor. I'm still tough, guys, I'm still tough, right? But there, but to be the Nutley, but to be the mayor of Nutley, Nutley is a very special place, and a place we all love, and Nutley is lucky to have my good friend. My good friend Joe Scarpelli.
Thank you, Al, and I'm sure Puffy's looking down on us today. Madam Clerk, any presentations?
No, Mayor, we have no presentations.
I'm gonna have Tina come up and lead us in song before we adjourn.
Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of gray. For purple mountains majesty, upon the fruited plains. America, America, God shed His grace on thee. And ground thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. America, America, God shed His grace on thee. And ground thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea.
Thank you, Tina, that was beautiful. You're all invited in the back for coffee and cake. I guess I'm gonna look to Commissioner Rogers. Do we have a motion?
Lot of emotion, but good emotion. I move that we close this session.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And the time is now 1:26.
We hope to see you all tonight at our meeting. Thank you all for coming, we really appreciate the support.